Mayor can do it this time. I'll do it next time.
Good evening, everybody. Before we get started and open our meeting, I'd like to just start that, start this meeting with an invocation. Bow our heads. Dear Lord, we just praise you for our city. We praise you for these leaders here. We praise you for the public here, our citizens and our staff. And we just ask you to be with us tonight and help us make the right decisions as we move forward. And we're just ever so gracious for this wonderful place we live. Amen.
Amen.
All right. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, April 14th, 2014, to order. City Clerk, please call roll and make any general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the April 14th, 2014, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide a public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk's staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Luckwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Kuntz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Tonight, we are honored to have the Sons of the American Revolution lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will everyone please rise?
Color Guard, up to the front. To the right, face. And salute. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready, two. To the left, face.
It's always an honor to have the Sons of the American Revolution here with us. Okay. City Clerk, please call the next item on the meeting agenda.
Our next item is approval of the meeting agenda. This is Agenda Item Number 14082.
Okay. I think we've got some items we'd like to move forward. Chris, are we talking about moving new business items to right after?
That's correct, yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd propose that we move the entirety of the new business agenda to immediately following the reports and presentations. And I also need to remove Agenda Item Number 14091, which tonight is on the consent agenda, which is the approval of the adoption of the City of Milton Parks and Recreation Department 2014 Fee Schedule. I need to just remove that from the agenda. It'll come back in a different format.
Okay. Is there anything else? Anybody? Council has or staff? Okay, I'll open up for a motion for amended agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda with the deletion of Agenda Item 14091 and the movement of the new business section to immediately following reports and presentations.
Second. Okay. The motion, Councilmember Longoria, second. Councilmember Morick. Any, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If that's unanimous. Okay. We will move on. Do we have any public comments, Sutie?
We do not, sir.
Okay. And move on to our consent agenda.
On our consent agenda this evening, first, we have approval of the March 10th, 2014 City Council Work Session Meeting Minutes, Agenda Item Number 14083. Next, approval of the March 17th, 2014 Regular City Council Meeting Minutes, Agenda Item Number 14084. Next, approval of an agreement between Workzone LLC and the City of Milton for the purchase of project management software, Agenda Item Number 14085. Our fourth consent agenda item is approval of a memorandum of understanding between the cities of Milton, Alpharetta, and Roswell for unified special weapons and tactics team operations, Agenda Item Number 14086. Next, approval of a resolution and contract for acquisition of right-of-way for Project HPP 00-0007-00313, State Route 372, Crab Apple Road, Birmingham Highway Intersection Improvements, Agenda Item Number 14087. Our sixth consent agenda item this evening is approval of the following subdivision plots. Blue Valley Phase 1, final plot revision, change address of Lot 67, show new location of Rose Bay Trail, add landscape easement between Rose Bay Trail and Wax Myrtle Road. Blue Valley Phase 2, final plat, create four lots. Deerfield Green Phase 1, final plat revision, revision of lots 231 through 240. Meadow Wood, minor plat, create three lots. High Grove, final subdivision plat revision, revision of setbacks and zoning classification, update owner information, update contact information, remove utilities and easement on Lot 1, revised lot lines between lots 3 through 4, 10 through 11, and 12 through 13. This is Agenda Item Number 14088. Our next consent agenda item this evening is approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Milton and 33 North Sports and Entertainment LLC to provide a strategic plan for creating a cooperative corporate partnership program, Agenda Item Number 14089. Next, approval of a second intergovernmental agreement between the City of Milton and Fulton County Board of Education for the use of Northwestern Middle School. Our next item this evening is approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Enviro Masters, Inc., for asbestos abatement at Bell Memorial Park, Agenda Item Number 14092. Next, approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the City of Milton and the Art Lady, Agenda Item Number 14093. Next, approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the City of Milton and Blaze Sports America, Inc., Agenda Item Number 14094. Our thirteenth consent agenda item this evening is approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the City of Milton and Wacky Schoolers, Inc., Agenda Item Number 14095. Our final consent agenda item this evening is approval of a parks and recreation agreement for outside providers between the City of Milton and NFL Youth Football League, Inc., Agenda Item Number 14096.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
I'll second it.
Okay, just to clarify, I think it was.
With the deletion of Item Number 9, Agenda Item Number 14091.
You have a second on that?
I second it.
Okay. The motion by Councilmember Luss for approval of the consent agenda, with the exception of one item, which is 14091, and a second by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If that's unanimous. Okay. Let's move on to reports and presentations.
Our first presentation this evening is Patriot's Day Proclamation, presented to the Sons of American Revolution. This is being presented by Councilmember Bill Luss.
It's always, if you would, come front and center.
Color Guard, to be with us. But on this particular date, we're celebrating Patriots' Day, and Patriots' Day really marked the start of the American Revolutionary War 239 years ago. And given that, each year, we have presented a proclamation to the chapter, and we will do that again here this evening. So I'll read it. "It's Patriots' Day. Whereas April 19th, 1775, is a momentous date in the founding of our nation, once celebrated with other patriotic holidays; and whereas, in the early hours of that day, Paul Revere, William Dawes, and Dr. Samuel Prescott raced through the Massachusetts countryside to warn fellow citizens that British troops were coming to arrest their leaders and seize their stores of munitions; and whereas, answering this alarm, patriots took up arms, congregated on the Village Green in Lexington, and during a confrontation with the British troops, several patriots were killed, thus marking the beginning of the war for American independence. And whereas, on that same day, determined patriots lay in wait for the advancing British at Concord's North Bridge, and during the intense fighting, there repulsed the British, who then began the retreat to Boston, with the patriots harassing them all the way. And whereas, news of the shot heard round the world galvanized public opinion in favor of the American Revolution, including reluctant Georgians. And whereas, it is appropriate that we recognize the importance of this day in our history, and remember the sacrifices endured by many patriots during years of struggle for American independence. And whereas, Milton County honored John Milton, a Georgia Continental officer whom the British captured at Fort MacIntosh in 1777 and imprisoned at St. Augustine. During the British capture of Savannah in 1778, Milton saved Georgia's public records by taking them to the Carolinas and later to Maryland. He returned the records following the reestablishment of Georgia's government in 1782. Milton County became part of Fulton County in 1931. And whereas, the City of Milton is named for John Milton and was, is within the county once named for him. Now therefore, the City of Milton proclaims the 14th Day of April as Patriots' Day, and encourages our citizens to honor the many patriots for whom Georgia counties and towns are named, and pay tribute to all the patriots of the American Revolution, given under his hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia, on this 14th Day of April in the year 2014."
that we enjoy, on their behalf and on behalf of the Sons of the American Revolution, we want to thank the City of Milton and the citizens of Milton for this proclamation.
If you all want to go down and make a presentation.
Through things like this, the actions of our forefathers will never be forgotten, and we appreciate everything that you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce Bill Cables, Color Guard Commander, Colonel George Thurman, Paul Prescott, former Commander, and Milton Zone, Bob Paul. Thank you all.
I'm going back to work as soon as we get done here. I told George you can't be long with him.
But I may be.
Just for tonight. All right. I think we're going to move into new business, so.
We've got one more proclamation.
You know what? My bad. I've got a proclamation on Arbor Day. I will read, and then ask Mark Law to accept that for us. Okay. Got a proclamation on Arbor Day. "Whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that all special day be set aside for the planting of trees. Whereas, this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Whereas, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Whereas, the Tree City USA program sponsored by the National Arbor Day Foundation provides direction, technical assistance, public attention, and national recognition for urban and community forestry programs in thousands of towns and cities that more than 93 million Americans call home. Whereas, the City of Milton was recognized as a tree city in 2011. And whereas, trees are among Milton's most beautiful natural resources and bestow fine opportunities for aesthetic appreciation and are indispensable to our ecology as providers of wildlife habitat, erosion control, air filters, moderators of temperature, and noise inhibitors. And whereas, as citizens of Milton, we enjoy the beauty and benefits of our natural environment, which increases property values, enhances the economic viability of business areas. And whereas, it is with the responsibility of each of us to safeguard the environment and make choices that have a positive impact on our environment and the world in which we live. And whereas, the City of Milton and our citizens are committed to the observation and stewardship of our natural resources, and now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the City of Milton, hereby recognize and proclaim April 25th, 2014, as Arbor Day, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and our environment, and make Milton an even greater place to live, work, and raise a family. And furthermore, we urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations, given under my hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia, on this 14th Day of April 2014." And if the council will join me and present this to our arborist, Mark Law.
I'd like to present, Mayor, I continue, the certification to Tree City USA, flat here, right here, and starts as a Tree City USA. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. And one, two. Thank you, Mark. All right, thank you. And also, just glad, I apologize, we've got a senior elected official here, Senator Brandon Beach, he's here on a business matter, but just wanted to. Thank you very much.
All right. If we can move on to new business, the city clerk, please call the items.
First item is consideration of a resolution appointing a member to the City of Milton Board of Zoning Appeals for District 3, Post 2, Agenda Item Number 14100.
Okay. Rick, you've got your appointee?
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank Rita Young for her years of service to the city on the Board of Zoning Appeals. She's been a great asset to the board and also committed member. She also served on the strategic planning team for Milton in 2012, giving of her time to the betterment of the city. Ms. Young is asked to step off the board due to other commitments. Thanks, Rita, for your service. It's my pleasure to nominate Mr. Sumit Shah to the vacant position on the BZA. Sumit has been a resident of Milton since 2009. He graduated from the University of South Carolina in 2000 with a BS in Finance, Marketing, and Management. He was employed in financial and management roles in several companies before he decided to go back to school to get his law degree. He received his JD from Florida Coastal School of Law in May 2008 and has been practicing law since 2009. He currently owns his own law practice, Shah Legal Group, based in Alpharetta. He's a member of the Alpharetta Rotary Club, the Young Lawyers Division Community Service Committee, and serves on the Florida Coastal School of Law Alumni Board of Directors. Mr. Mayor and council, I'm recommending Sumit Shah as amender, a member of the City of Milton Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'll second that.
All right. I've got, I'll take, there's a motion from Councilmember Morick, a second from Councilmember Longoria.
Well, that's what I heard, a motion. Did it, was it not a motion?
I'll call the motion. I'd like to make a motion that we.
Okay. Everybody was looking at me funny, like, Joe, you jumped the gun.
That's all right. They always look at you funny. All right. I got a motion from Councilmember Morick and a second from Councilmember Longoria for the nomination of Sumit Shah for the Board of Zoning and Appeals. Do I have any comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If that's unanimous. If we've got our last Sumit to step forward and we'll swear our mouth.
So, happy stuff. Sorry to be bad. Just raise your right hand and swear affirm. I do solemnly swear and affirm. That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
The Board of Zoning Appeals Member.
The Board of Zoning Appeals Member.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
As always, we appreciate all our volunteers and folks that make a difference in our city.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. The city clerk, please call the next item.
Our next item is approval of an minor agency agreement between the City of Milton, Georgia and the Greater North Fulton Chamber of Commerce, Inc., doing business as Progress Partners, North Fulton, Atlanta, to implement certain economic development-related sections of the strategic plan, approval item, Agenda Item Number 14101. Mr. Bill O'Connor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here with you again, talk a little bit about economic development. When we talked about it in the fall, we mentioned that it's a team sport and that all boats rise with the tide, and that translates into it's necessary to have a regional approach for the City of Milton to build partnerships and relationships with everybody who can help Milton move ahead from an economic development point of view. So, as a result, we've built good relationships at the state level with the Department of Economic Development in particular. The mission of that department, as you know, is to search nationwide and even globally to bring industry and business to the state of Georgia, and they're doing a fantastic job. Georgia's growing rapidly. Then we have built relationships with the Metro Atlanta Chamber of Commerce, and their mission is to focus on the 29-county region. We're part of that. And things get handed down from the state to the MAC, and sometimes MAC finds things on their own, but they are interested in bringing business and industry to the 29-county region around the city of Atlanta. And of course, at the local level, we advocate for Milton, just as Roswell and Alpharetta advocate for themselves. But the Greater North Fulton Chamber of Commerce is concerned about building business and industry in the six cities in North Fulton County. Various chambers of commerce undertake this mission in a variety of ways, and here, I think we have a very unique and effective model called Progress Partners. It's an initiative of the Greater North Fulton Chamber of Commerce. We've been part of this organization from the beginning, about four years, we're initial member. We're asking you tonight to renew that membership. Progress Partners advocates for North Fulton County and the six cities in North Fulton County, and sometimes even a little bit beyond, building a variety of relationships. And I have found that, for myself, here in Milton, it's been one of the most effective, most helpful tools at my disposal in terms of building my own network, learning how the region is structured, who's who, how the various organizations work. And this organization has been very helpful. They bring all of the cities to the table, they facilitate regular meetings of our colleagues here in North Fulton County from the other cities. We get around the table, we hear presentations, we talk with each other, we share information, we talk about common problems and ideas and so on. So, we think this is a very important thing that we do from an economic development point of view. Their focus is indeed regionally, and they can do things regionally in terms of workforce development, advocating for transportation projects and things like that, that we really can't do standing alone as a city, in a small city at that. So what I'd like to do is ask Brandon Beach, our senator, and he's the president and secretary of the Greater North Fulton Chamber of Commerce, to say a few words about Progress Partners and introduce some of the key staff.
Well, thank you, Bill. Appreciate that, and we appreciate working with you.
Before I start, I thank you all for having us, Mayor and council, and also, I want to thank you for your support in the past. Y'all been supporting us since day one, and we appreciate that. I also have Al Nash, who's the executive director of Progress Partners, and Bethany Usri. They do all the work. They are a great team and a great part of our team. Let me tell you a little bit about the brief history of Progress Partners. I've been at the chamber 11 years, and 11 years ago, we did economic development, but we really didn't do economic development. The phone was ringing off the hook. I mean, the 400 corridor was booming, companies were coming up here as fast as we could put them in a building and get their permitting, and, but you fast forward to about 2008, 2009, the phone stopped ringing, and we had to make some fundamental change, and we had to be more aggressive and proactive, and that's what we did. We kind of got around the table, cooked some dinner, drank a little wine, and came up with the idea of Progress Partners, that we needed to have an economic development entity that worked on retention, business expansion, and recruitment of new businesses, and we needed to be aggressive. One of the things I learned as president of the chamber right off the bat, our competition was not Gwinnett and Cobb. Our competition was Charlotte, Dallas, Jacksonville, Tampa, and these other cities that these companies were looking at besides the metro area. So what we did, and, you know, when you look at the GNFCC mission statement, the GNFCC is the catalyst for economic development, business growth, and quality of life in North Fulton. And that's very similar to what we do for Progress Partners, is we think that we're the connector to make the six distinct cities one unique opportunity, and we're the catalyst for regional economic development and collaboration. They do all the work, they are a great team and a great part of our team. Let me tell you a little bit about the brief history of Progress Partners. I've been at the chamber 11 years, and 11 years ago, we did economic development, but we really didn't do economic development. The phone was ringing off the hook, I mean, the 400 corridor was booming, companies were coming up here as fast as we could put them in a building and get their permitting, and but you fast forward to about 2008, 2009, the phone stopped ringing, and we had to make some fundamental change, and we had to be more aggressive and proactive, and that's what we did. We kind of got around the table, cooked some dinner, drank a little wine, and came up with the idea of Progress Partners, that we needed to have an economic development entity that worked on retention, business expansion, and recruitment of new businesses, and we needed to be aggressive. One of the things I learned as president of the chamber right off the bat, our competition was not Gwinnett and Cobb. Our competition was Charlotte, Dallas, Jacksonville, Tampa, and these other cities that these companies were looking at besides the metro area. So, what we did, and you know, when you look at the GNFCC mission statement, the GNFCC is the catalyst for economic development, business growth, and quality of life in North Fulton, and that's very similar to what we do for Progress Partners, is we think that we're the connector to make the six distinct cities one unique opportunity, and we're the catalyst for regional economic development and collaboration with other entities, whether it's Georgia Power, the Metro Chamber, the brokerage community, or who that may be, the Department of Economic Development. I also serve on the Economic Development Committee in the Senate, so I work very closely with Chris Carr, our new commissioner, who's doing an outstanding job, but those relationships is what I think we bring to the table, and the connectivity and the collaboration. I do want to hand this out to you. If you can hand that. This is our new chamber guide, and it's for 2014 and 2015. I will tell you, if you'll take a look at page 12, there's an article on the City of Milton that we.
It's a bad picture, Mayor.
We did have to airbrush that picture a little bit. They worked with it, we had a good airbrush photographer, but no, Mayor, it's a good picture of you, and it's a great article, but we really do go by this idea of six distinct cities, one unique opportunity, and when you look at all six cities, they're different. You all have a horse, and you're a horse country, and you look at, Roswell has the historic district, but when you put it all together, we've got some great opportunities. I will tell you, the advantages for Milton, being an investor, is you have access to CoStar and our research for the city staff, you have education, workforce development, we're involved with GTC, Roswell United Methodist Church with their job networking, the Board of Regions, and Quick Start, and I will tell you, Quick Start's very important to train employees. The regional economic development, we work with ARC, TAG, the Innovation Crescent. Regional marketing efforts, you know, you can look at Georgia Trend, the Atlanta Business Chronicle, we recently had a insert in the Business Chronicle, and we had an insert in the Crescent Business Report, talking about healthcare, and talking about Philips Healthcare, for example, that's in the city of Milton. So, we feel like we've done very well of getting our message out there, getting as much free press as we can get when announcements come our way. As I said earlier, we have a business retention and an expansion program, and then we also are very involved in infrastructure, whether it's education, a new technical college coming to our region, whether it's transportation, water, sewer, whatever that infrastructure need is, we're on top of it, because we know how important infrastructure is to get companies to come here. The other thing I would say to you is, we are joined at the hip with the North Fulton CID, the Community Improvement District, which is in Milton, Alpharetta, and Roswell, and I will tell you that it's a separate entity from the chamber, I'm the executive director of that organization, but I will tell you that when you look at what the CID's done to improve economic development and quality of life, all four of those interchanges, that was not GDOT that did that, that was the North Fulton CID that landscaped and did all that work at Winward, the stone and the landscaping and so on, and I will tell you, when we're recruiting a company, it makes a big difference, because when they see these interchanges, they feel like they've arrived. Right now, we're working on a couple other projects at North Winds, we're also working on left-turn lanes coming into Milton off Winward, there'll be triple lefts now, that's a project, we're waiting on one grant from the Serta Grants, the State Road and Tollway Authority, we've put in for a million-dollar grant, we think we will get it, I've been pushing for it, if we have that, plus the million and a half we have, we can get this over the goal line and get that finished, and that'll make a big difference on alleviating traffic coming off 400 onto Winward, because we've already got the right-turn lane that we did about a year and a half ago, then you'll have triple lefts. So, from an infrastructure standpoint, I would just tell you, we're on top of it as a chamber and as Progress Partners. And then I will tell you that we've got some great relationships with the brokerage community, and one of the things that Al found out very quickly was that a lot of these big, big companies like Kimberly-Clark, they don't go to the state now, they go to their real estate company that does their real estate for the country, whether it's Stahlback or Grubbin Ellis or CB Richard Ellis, or whoever it is. They go to them and say, we want to consolidate, we want to close this facility down in Boca Raton, we're looking at, you know, Charlotte or Atlanta, what do you think's the best opportunity for us, what are our best options, and then they'll go back and present. Well, we, through our relationships, a lot of times, we find out stuff before the state or the Georgia Power, so, and that's how it used to happen, you would always get your leads from either Georgia Power or the State Department of Economic Development. We have several project wins that we can talk about, some of them in the City of Milton, some of them not, you know, you look at Verizon Wireless, just announced 450 jobs in Milton and Alpharetta, some in Alpharetta, some in Milton, and I believe maybe even some in Roswell down by Sanctuary Park, but, and then Fiserv, 2,500 jobs, that was in the city of Alpharetta, but those people will eat in your restaurants, they'll shop, they'll buy houses in Milton, so, I mean, it's good news. And Hewlett Packard, they announced a job expansion, so we were involved in all those, so we're really proud of these wins we've had. And then finally, I will tell you that one of the things that we also have done a really good job of is we are camera-ready, and I don't know if you're aware, but the film industry is very, very big in the state of Georgia. North Carolina and Michigan just stopped doing their tax credits, so we're seeing the film industry now not only come here and film movies in the state, but they're putting down roots. You look at Screen Gems, Tyler Perry Studios, the new one down in Noonan that Dan Cathy's involved with, Pine Wood Studios, and then there's one in Gwinnett. So, what we're seeing is a cradle-to-grave with the film industry, is they start a film, and then they're doing post-production. In the beginning, when we did the first tax credits here in the state, they'd come here, they'd film the movie, and then they'd go back to California, but now, we're getting the post-productions, which is good news, because that's a whole new kind of set of jobs, if you will, and the ancillary benefits of the film industry is catering, hotel rooms, shopping, I mean, it's just, it's a ripple effect, and we've got a great camera-ready program, so if the Georgia Film Department needs a horse farm, or a high school, or a swimming pool, or something, we have everything that's available, and I got to give Bethany kudos for putting that together, so that they can just go to the database and look for those items. If they need an Anabellum home, for example, they can look at something in Roswell, but we've done a real good job of making sure that we're available for the film industry, and that's going to continue to grow as a state, I think will continue to grow in the film industry. I mean, I don't know if you saw this week, they announced, or last week, they announced Leah Neiman's going to, Taken Three's going to be filmed here in Atlanta, which is going to be a big boost for our economy, so, but with that, I think we do monthly reports, we give you measurements, and with that, I will open it up for questions and ask for your continued support, because I think we've, I would just tell you, we've got a lot of momentum going on in North Fulton. I mean, we have a lot of things happening here in our region, especially up this 400 corridor, and I will tell you, Governor Deal realizes, you know, from an infrastructure standpoint, his number-one issue's the Port of Savannah, getting that deepened, but on a surface transportation project, his number-one project is 40285 interchange, and really the whole top-end half of 285, because that interchange is dangerous, inefficient, and probably the worst interchange in the southeast. We got to get that fixed, there's $110 million towards that, I was working on that when I was at GDOT, but let me say this, we got to fix 400 and the top end of 285 also, even if you fix that interchange. We just opened up about a week ago, week and a half ago, we opened up the Flyover Bridge at 485, right over Sidney Marcus, and so I think you're going to see a lot of changes in driving patterns. We are also working, and it's in the tip that just got passed this last week, it's in the stip and tip, is the, we're going to get an interchange built at McGinnis Ferry Road and 400, and that's our goal, is to get that interchange done. So, the CID's put a lot of money towards advancing that from engineering and studies. We had to do what they call IJR, an interchange justification report, and it came back saying that it was justified to put a interchange at McGinnis Ferry 400. So, those are a few of the things that we're working on, and again, with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Bill?
Thank you, one to Chris. I noticed the term of the agreement is from 16 July 2013 to 15 July 2014. Is that correct? Under the now, therefore.
Counselor, yes, I believe that's correct. If you have questions as to why it is those dates, we can certainly get Bill back up to discuss it. I know that we expired in July of 2013, so this must be intended to be a bridging document between those dates. Is that correct, Bill?
That's correct. Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Senator, I just have a quick question with, and I certainly get it with, you know, as I think Bill said, all boats rise with the tide, and, you know, sometimes people think Milton's gone off to the side as far, you know, away from 400 and Alpharetta and Roswell and some of the areas with business, but, you know, we certainly realize that we gain as a community with the needs that we have, and also with our residential and whatnot, but I guess a question, out of the six North Fulton cities, who all participates in the Progress Partners?
Right now, Roswell, Alpharetta, and Milton. We now have a new city manager coming on board in Johns Creek, and the old city manager just, there was a relationship issue, if you will, to say, and so we never were able to advance the ball with Johns Creek. We believe now, we've met with Mayor Botker, we think they will be on, we're 99% sure. Mayor Botker has said we will go forward with a $25,000 contribution, and then the same thing, Eva, Mary Galambos did a great job, and, but she had a, she didn't forget anything, and something happened between the chamber and her back in 1978, I think. I was at LSU drinking beer at the time, I had nothing to do with it, and I told her that, but I will tell you, she forever kind of held that against us. That being said, I've met with Mayor Rusty Paul, and they are going to also come on board, so we got to go before a workshop and make a presentation. So, I think we'll have all five cities. Mountain Park is, you know, a difference, but, and that's our goal, is to have all five cities contribute, and then with Fulton County Development Authority, the CID has contributed, and we have several companies, Georgia Power, Northside Hospital, some other companies, that have contributed, that we think that we can be the catalyst to bring all these cities together. And to your point, let me just tell you, it's a competitive business economic development. Our first goal is to get the jobs to Georgia, then get them to the region, and then if we can get them to the region, we got a great shot at getting them up here in North Fulton, and then it just depends on the needs from a power standpoint or square footage standpoint. You can only lead them to a certain area, then they decide where they want to go in this area, but I can tell you, with our great schools, our great greenways and parks and quality of life, and our public safety, and our healthcare, if we can get them up here, again, with those interchanges landscaped and take them to Verizon, or do some, sell the area, it's a pretty easy area to sell, and once we get them here, so, and that, y'all deserve the credit for that, for what y'all have done here in Milton, so, I just think that we're going to continue to grow, this 400 corridor is going to continue to grow.
Okay. Anybody else, Bill?
Senator.
Yes.
You mentioned some large corporations, Georgia Power and some others. Is a membership to Progress Partners just restricted to the cities, or are there some private partners, or the provisions for private partners to?
Oh, no, we do have private, we have private corporations giving us money also.
Kind of like the CID.
Yeah, but they're not, they don't have to, I mean, it's not like the CID, if you're in the CID, you have to pay that three-mil tax, if you're in that boundary that's been approved by the Tax Commissioner and the Board of Commissioners, and we get a monthly check, and then we got a 10-member board that takes that money and tries to leverage it for state and federal dollars by doing environmental studies and studies and pre-engineering and that kind of thing. This is a little bit different, it's just a, it's an organization, and what I did, when we started this, I will tell you, I started this on a one-page piece of paper, I had no plan at all, and the first person I went to was a guy named Mike Garrett, he was president of Georgia Power. Georgia Power gets it when it comes to economic development, and I said, Mike, here's what we want to do, and we patterned ourselves after Partnership Gwinnett, which had been successful, and I said, we want to start an organization, Progress Partners, you have to trust me, I need 75K, can you help me? And they stroked the check and on blind faith, took a chance, and for the first six months, we didn't have many wins, because you got to get your pipeline, you got to get everything out, but then all of a sudden, we had some big wins, and they see the value, and they've been a continued partner, so we've got them, we've got Northside, DeKalb Office Environments, Lexus Nexus, we've got a lot of companies that are in for different amounts, whether it's $5,000 a year to $75,000 to $100,000 a year, so, we just, and I will tell you, one of our goals is, is if we could get the private community to do it, we wouldn't have to come to the cities, but we want the cities to be involved, and we took a strategy that we think the cities need to have a little skin in the game for us to be successful, and if y'all have skin in the game, it just, we're all working together, and there's more collaboration and connectivity, so that's why we ask for your support. But what I did tell, going back, when I started Progress Partners, when we started Progress Partners, I told Mike Garrett, and I told everybody, all the cities, the money you give us goes in a bucket, and it's not for our gala, it's not for our golf tournament, it's not for operations of the chamber, it's for operations of Bethany, and Al, and myself, so if we go on a, like, we're going to go out to San Diego to the bio show, the state's giving us the credentials, so we don't have to pay for the credentials, and we're going to pay for our hotel room and our airfare, the state won't pick that up, but we'll be out there talking to, I don't know how many bio companies will be there, Al?
About 13,000.
Yeah, about 13,000 people, talking about biosciences, and I think I already may have stated, I'm chairman of the Science and Technology Committee in the Senate, so I'm going there wearing a couple hats, but it'll help for us to have the presence there to try to attract some of these biotech companies, because we already have a great healthcare IT up here with Philips and McKesson and all the Siemens and all the different companies we have up here. We're the high-tech healthcare corridor in the southeast. The other thing I would tell you is, you know, I don't know if you're aware of this, but 70% of credit card transactions are done right here in the metro Atlanta area, and most of them are done in North Fulton. So, when you go swipe your card, it's coming through one of these, whether it's First Data or whoever it is, but there's, those companies are processing 70%, so we feel like we're going to continue to be the technology capital of the southeast here in North Fulton. Well, we appreciate you having us tonight, we appreciate working with Bill, and again, it is a team effort, and when you work together, you can get a lot more accomplished, so thank you, and we appreciate the consideration of supporting us again this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. All right, any discussion, or if not, we'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve an interagency agreement between the City of Milton, Georgia and the Greater North Fulton Chamber of Commerce doing business as Progress Partners, North Fulton, Atlanta, to implement certain economic development-related sections of the strategic plan, Agenda Item Number One Four Dash One Zero One.
Second. Is that a motion?
Yes. Oh, you're fine.
I've got a motion from Councilmember Longoria, a second from Councilmember Moore. Any discussion? Just, we'll say thanks to not only you, Brandon, but Al and Bethany and Bill, working together, and again, the whole region, I think, is benefiting, so, all right, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. City clerk, please call the next item.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Next item is consideration of an application for the abandonment of all public rights of way within the Crooked Creek subdivision, Agenda Item Number Fourteen, One Zero Two, Mr. Carter Lucas.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We've received an application for the abandonment of the roads within the Crooked Creek subdivision. Under our current process, that once we receive the application, it's afforded a hearing before Mayor and City Council to consider the acceptance of the application. This does not in any way affect any future consideration or any future determination of whether that right-of-way should be abandoned, it merely allows the application to consider, continue through the process. We do this for one reason, to make sure that because of the burden... to make sure that because of the burden of proof on the applicant moving forward is relatively substantial, it's an opportunity for Council to either accept or deny the application forthright without any further discussion. It does, does not relieve the applicant of his obligation to either demonstrate that the right-of-way has no substantial public purpose, or that its removal from the municipal street system is in the best public interest. That will be their obligation for the remainder of the process, to demonstrate one of those conditions has been met. So at this point, staff has made no determination on the validity of the application, only that it's been received and has this hearing before Council tonight. That's it. If I have, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
And just to clarify what you said, Carter, we're not, as a Mayor and Council, whatever decision, we make which a decision tonight to accept the application or not, but we're not, by accepting it, it's not inferring approval. But it is, we are taking on a little burden that we realize the applicant is, if we accept the application, they're gonna have to go through a lot of work and probably a lot of cost. So that we are, we are at least open to looking at the application and genuinely considering it, considering it. Is that, would that be the best way to?
Yes, so that's correct. It has no bearing on your future.
No guarantees, but.
That's right.
You know, if we were totally against it.
We're just not saying, are you kidding?
Yeah.
The original purpose was to make sure that we didn't have problems on the face of a road abandonment issue. And that way, a lot of work wasn't done for no apparent benefit.
That's right. It would give you an opportunity, if you wanted us to look at something specific through the process to voice those concerns now, or just deny it outright.
Okay. Bill?
I guess the motion then would be to approve the acceptance of an application.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
Are you making a motion?
You wanna make a motion?
Having said that, I'll move to accept an application for the abandonment of all public rights of way within the Crooked Creek subdivision, agenda item number 14-102.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion for the acceptance of the application for abandonment from Councilmember Lusk and a second from Councilmember Thurman. Is there any discussion?
Well, I just want to mention, full disclosure, I'm a resident of Crooked Creek. In, in a brief discussion that I had with the city attorney, a vote tonight wouldn't be problematic from my point of view. So I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and vote tonight on that.
Yeah, and then kind of in general, just the public's knowledge is, you know, from what I understand, from our city attorneys and in the past, if this is a general vote on something that, it's not singling you out, but basically the goodwill or the, the community equally, then it's, it's not a conflict of interest. All right, hearing no more. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Bill, move on to the next new business item, and then we'll go back to the rest of our agenda.
Next item is consideration of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton, Georgia and Laurel A. Florio for land conservation consulting services. This is agenda item number 14-103. Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor and Council, this is a contract that I'm bringing before you after meeting individually with you about this topic. And, I hate these strings. I can't see them there. I can't see Garrett.
I was just about six inches taller.
Just stand, just stand up here.
I'll tell you what. Making faces out here.
There we go. So this, this contract comes forward as a, as a first step towards Milton taking the lead on a conservation and preservation initiative. You know, Milton, as, as you know just as well as I do, is a very beautiful community, probably the prettiest community that I've ever driven through. And, and a lot of that is attributed to the view sheds that we have and the land that's conserved and preserved in, in and around the northern part of the city, central part of the city, you know, all parts of the city for that matter. You can really kind of just tell when you have made it home. I can tell you that that's one of the things that also the strategic plan speaks to about preserving open space. And one of the things that I'd like to do is to take the lead and take the initiative on figuring out what that, what that plan looks like for us going forward, what a preservation of open space plan looks like. And we happen to have somebody who is right here in our hometown, in our community, who's spent a lifelong doing just these things, is uniquely positioned and situated over the next three months to kind of put us on the road and course for moving forward. I can't tell you what happens beyond three months because I really don't know what the next three months brings, other than we've kind of put it into a scope of work in the form of different deliverables. But I'd ask for your support and your support of this initiative and your support of Milton taking the, the lead in, in doing these things for our community, because if we act now, we have some chance of protecting that character that we all talk about, the character that frames our mission statement, the character that is embodied in our strategic plan, and that character that I think the community wants preserved. So this is a, yet again, another tool in that toolbox. It's not an end-all, be-all, but it certainly would be another expert at our disposal to kind of put us on the right course of what it looks like to do some of the preservation and conservation type initiatives, as opposed to those initiatives we take when we rezone or otherwise look at development. Be happy to answer any questions.
What, what do you see is the, or what are we targeting for the end result of this? What are we looking for, deliverable?
The deliverable that I'm looking for is, is number one, that we would have some benchmarking, that we would look at communities that have done this and been successful in ways that they had done it. And number two, to be down this road of whatever this open space plan is that we, we look at. You know, some, it's got a fancy buzzword through the, through the Trust for Public Land called a green print. I don't know that that's necessarily what we would do in Milton. Maybe we do, maybe we don't. But in some capacity, we will, just like, almost a supplement to our comprehensive plan, that would show us different conservation and preservation initiatives and what land truly we would be interested in conserving and preserving in, in Milton, so that we would almost have that map and know what that, what that future looked like.
So when, what we'll see kind of at the end of this consulting agreement will be, kind of here's the tools, different tools we can have, be it conservation subdivision, identifying, identifying, I guess, kind of what options we might have.
I think we're gonna be further down the road than that. You know, I think we're really gonna put some work, work into it. And I, I would say that we're in the process of doing either an open space, open space plan or a green print by the time we get done with this. I, I don't think this is, this isn't designed to be one of those things that just lays out a certain set of, certain set of, hey, here you go, these are different options type thing.
It'll identify actual footprints.
Let's identify action items and let's move on it. Okay, and let's move on it pretty quick.
Okay. Anybody else? Bill?
Karen.
You go ahead and Karen can be next.
I'm looking at exhibit A in the deliverables. And in the article D, develop green print, described in pretty general terms. I guess further to, to Rick's question, how are we gonna know we're finished when this contract is finished with these general terms? And I guess, well, one, for example, is influence existing subdivision plans. To what extent and how long would that go on since we have any number of subdivision plans that will be coming forth here in the next couple of years? Are we gonna get a further definition of these, these terms and tasks?
Let's see if I can answer your questions in order. The, the first one with respect to the vagueness or the looseness of the title, develop green print, that's kind of by design. Because I don't know that necessarily what we will, as we move through A, B, and C, that we will actually move towards a green print or not. And that's why you can kind of see that the approach is something that we define in this process, whether that would be something that we would do using the Trust for Public Land or potentially not. With respect to your influence existing subdivision plans, that was simply put in there because we've got a different lens potentially that we can look through at either current subdivision plans that are in the pipeline or future ones that come in while we have this expertise at our disposal. It's worth looking at those plans to see if there's any, any value that somebody who's conservation and preservation minded can, can, got that planning background can look at and say, you know, based upon, based upon what I'm seeing, I'd make a different recommendation. I am absolutely in agreement with you that, you know, we are very high level in this, in this scope of work. And it's high level partly by design so that it can move and change if it needs to as we start to uncover A, B, and C. So that's, that is a bit by design. I can tell you that if, if we get going with A, B, and C and can hone in D a little bit better, I'd be very happy to, if, if you'd like to hone in some of those definitions, once we discover what they are, and bring them back to the Council, so that you have some level of comfort that, that you're right, so that we know what done is.
Karen, you have something?
Yeah, I guess a few months ago, we went ahead and hired some of the guys from ICMA to do some part of a project. Will I, will she be working directly with them to make sure we're not paying twice for the same stuff?
Correct. Well, we're, we're actually asking for two different things. So I don't see that there's gonna be a major overlap between the deliverable that we received from ICMA and this consulting work. But to the extent that they'll be working together and, and making sure that we don't cross-purpose, absolutely. The, the thing that we got from, goodness, the thing that we got from ICMA is more of a comprehensive look across the great expanse of what green space preservation and conservation means, and not focus solely in on this whole green print or open space type idea. So what ICMA is doing for us and what the deliverable is, is almost ready to be delivered to you, is real high level, more global than this very, this is more specific towards figuring out how we not, how we don't change our development plans or development strategies, but how we preserve some of the pieces of land that we currently have existing today in Milton from, from overdevelopment or any development.
So, and, and we talked about this when we spoke recently, Chris, and that's, I mean, does this get integrated into our comprehensive land use plan? How, how does the, what layer is this in the overall scheme? Because, you know, it seems like, I mean, to a certain extent, not that this is redundant, but this is like adding on pieces to something that we already have a plan for. And we're just not talking about the right thing in the current plan. So, so wouldn't we just add to the comprehensive land use plan and add a layer that discusses how we manage this particular aspect to that?
We could. You know, the, the comprehensive plan is, you know, it has a future land use map in it. And what it speaks to is land in different types of, of future use that's zoning-based. So, you know, it, it shows where there's agricultural zoned area, where there's R1, R2, AG weed, all those different zoning categories. What we envision a little bit different with this layer is that it doesn't necessarily speak towards development patterns, but it speaks towards preservation of what we currently have. Because AG1 by right could have single-family estate lots on it at an acre minimum all day long in Milton. Well, that's, that would be comprehensive plan-driven type development, where what this is focusing on is what are the different ways and incentives to, instead of having that 40 acres turned into one-acre minimums with estate lots, what causes that 40 acres to either stay as its 40 acres of natural beauty or some other view shed corridor along the highway with, you know, some type of a conservation easement in the first 50 feet of the property, or an assortment of different things like that. So it, it looks at it from a little bit different of a perspective, I think. I think they could work together. I don't know if I've answered your question, or if I've muddied it up, but.
Well, no, no, you answered it to a certain extent. I mean, I guess that, yeah, I, I've just, I've got some, I guess, concerns is too strong of a word. I'm not concerned. I understand that this is, could be good work. I just, we had a huge outpouring of effort by individuals that were part of our city, that volunteered countless hours to come up with strategy documents and land use plans and things of that nature up to this point. And I would hate to see us discount any of that work in favor of something else that we, you know, pay for. And it's not that paying for it is the problem. I'm just saying that we've done a lot of work in this area. And I'm, I guess I'm not convinced that, that we need to take this step right this second. I mean, although it's hard to argue with it. I mean, it sounds like apple pie in baseball and everything else. I mean, who would want to be against a green print? It just sounds too good. But, but I guess that's what, what my concern is.
I understand, I understand. You know, in, not intending to respond to your concern, but I'll, I intend to respond to your comment about all the work that went into the content, comprehensive plan. I absolutely agree with you there. And I don't think that this would be intended if it moves forward. If the Council's comfortable with the comprehensive plans that exist today and it being the document that drives land use through zoning without a layer of some look at conservation and preservation, I'm absolutely fine with that. I just, I want to hear that direction from the Council. I, I believe I've heard that the Council wants to have something more at their disposal in this conservation and preservation effort. But, you know, to the extent that this would, I can't imagine it would conflict with, I, I would imagine that it would just be further supportive of the comprehensive plan and not, not intended to replace it, replicate it, duplicate it, eliminate it, any of those things.
I, I almost see it as, you know, we've got a, we've got our plan, and that's done and all this. And this would not change the plan, as I think Chris kind of mentioned earlier. But it gives other alternatives in certain areas to complement the plan. Or, you know, maybe we can still stick with the plan, but it gives us other things that, tools that can be done within the confines of the, the comprehensive plan. But Matt, and I think Rick wants to.
Yeah, the, and just from my knowledge of, of everything we're talking about here, what we're looking at is really an amendment to the current comprehensive plan, which does allow us to utilize resources that we haven't necessarily thought of before, to achieve the objective of preserving what it is that we, that we have within the City of Milton. Some of that, obviously, the green print is a prioritization of current land that we have, how we want to preserve that, having a, a right or, or a, an option for a public trust, or trust for public land to be able to, to maybe purchase easements in certain areas for a trailway system, for example, or, or have opportunities where people understand that, you know, they can do TDRs, things like that from a, from a community standpoint. So, in, in my mind, I think it's a very good team effort for all of us within the City of Milton as a whole, from our citizens, from the city, from, and us finding a bridge of gap. Obviously, there's legalities that the city must follow, but this allows for all of us, I think, to work in a unified way to, to find the solution to how we go about best preserving that is best within Milton. So I don't think it changes the comprehensive plan. I think it's just an amendment to what we currently have. But it does provide those tools that allow us to be able to, to achieve that objective.
Okay, Rick?
And I guess what, what I'd like to see come out of this would, we talked, we've talked before on how do we incentivize landowners, what are the tools that are out there. Today, the comprehensive land use map, I think is, it's more broad, saying, here's what we can put in the different areas. But I think, I'm not educated enough to know in this area, what are all the things that are out there that we could do? What, and I think in talking to Laurel, she said she would be connecting with other cities, other organizations that have already done this, gone before us, that maybe we can benefit from that, that education.
Okay.
I'll see it as enhancing our current plan.
It's a compliment.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? And I, I do, you know, want to say in, in our audience, this Dr. Laura Winters out here, and obviously, we're with Preserve Royal Milton. And again, this is, you know, this is city action, but we appreciate efforts that you guys have, have done too. So hopefully, this is at least on the same path and the same ultimate goal that, that a lot of our citizens want. So I'm excited about it if Council decides to move forward.
If the Council decides to move forward, why don't I offer that, you know, since there'd be a lot of work done here pretty quick, you know, we're gonna hit the ground running, that I'll bring an update on this process. I'll bring an update at the May Work Session. So give us 30 days to get underway and bring you something, so that you don't all of a sudden say, 90 days from now, what the heck was that all about? We'll do this this. Since I hear there's some question as to the, the high level that the scope's written at, let me bring some updates back to you on a regular basis, so that you get some, some level of comfort that we're going the right direction, make sure we don't need to course correct.
Okay. Nothing else? Up, up for a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the consideration of professional services agreement between the City of Milton, Georgia and Laurel A. Florio for land conservation consulting services, agenda item number 14-103.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Coons and a second by Councilmember Hewitt. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, so per our agenda change, we'll move back to our public hearings. The City Clerk, please call. our public hearings. The City Clerk, please call first item.
First item is consideration of issuance of the addition of wine package to an existing alcohol beverage license for All About Spirits, Inc., doing business as All About Spirits, located at 15840 Birmingham Highway, Suite B, Milton, Georgia, 3004. The applicant is Tana Coleman, for package retail wine, in addition to existing distilled spirits package retail. This is Agenda Item Number 14-097, Ms. Stacy Ingles.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you is simply adding wine to her already existing distilled spirits package retail license. She would have done this in the beginning, but I think there was an agreement between her and her landlord that she would not sell wine, because I believe the landlord is the owner of the gas station. And so, they, he has since given that permission to her to be able to sell wine at her establishment. So, this is simply just adding wine to her already existing license.
Karen?
I thought the issue was that according to the overlay, and according to the agreement of that whole area, that it could only be one in that area. It wasn't the landlord necessarily, I mean, it was because it was the Publix and other places that were selling it. Is it just the gas station that was the problem?
I believe it was just the gas station. That's my understanding. That's what was told to me in the very beginning of the application process. And I believe, if I remember correctly, that was the issue, and whenever she was getting her distilled spirits license.
Joe?
You're ringing a bell there, Karen, because I remember something about, yeah, freaking, I can't remember the retail.
I thought it was the one that was in the Publix, couldn't sell.
Yeah, I thought it was maybe the wine.
Liquors.
I remember pretty clearly when All About Spirits was coming through, and we were dealing with a couple of different things. There was the Barnum Bottle Shop that wanted to sell distilled, but couldn't, because All About Spirits had a distilled license, and was allowed by, it was unconditional C1 zoning at the All About Spirits, which allowed for the package store to occur there, which it was zoning conditioned against at the Barnum Bottle Shop. But I do also remember, as a part of that discussion, that wine and beer was sold at the Shell gas station, and because he was the landlord to the tenant, which was All About Spirits, he did not want her selling beer and wine, because that would conflict with his ability to have customers for beer and wine at the Shell. I could go back and confirm all that in the record, but that's the way.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not just taking their word for it, that it was just between the applicant and their landlord.
And I thought the issue was, the Barnum Bottle Shop had applied, was denied, but then, because you get your distilled spirits from the state, that's how the gas station or the tenant next to got that, which then blocked, within a certain distance, somebody else acquiring a license.
The Barnum Bottle Shop applied, but if you recall, the original Fulton County zoning in that northeast corner section was zoning conditioned against the sale of distilled spirits. So, and the other corney, the other corner was an unconditional C1 zoning, which allowed for it.
That's how they got it.
That's correct. A bit unfortunate, but that's how it happened.
Now, I'll ask our city attorney this too. Is it under our purview, you know, do we have anything to do with it? I'm going to assume the landlord is okay with it now that it's coming forward.
It's not our concern.
But it's not our concern, right? That's, we approve it, whoever has an issue with it, that's.
That's between the landlord and the tenant.
Okay.
That's right, Mr. Mayor. It'd be a private contractual issue between them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? Anybody want to ask? None? I'll open up for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 14-097.
You know, do I need to, excuse me one second, just for clarification, this is a public hearing. We don't have any public comment, do we?
We do not, sir.
Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'll open up for a motion.
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item 14-097.
Second.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, a second, I think, was that a second?
That was a second.
A second from Councilmember Longoria.
You can bust it.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. If our City Clerk would please call the next item in the public hearing.
The next item is consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license for Sequoia Golf Manor LLC, doing business as the Manor Golf and Country Club, located at 15951 Manor Club Drive, Milton, Georgia, 3004. The applicant is Robin Sradlin, for consumption on premises, wine and malt beverages, Agenda Item Number 14-098, Ms. Stacy Ingles.
This is simply a new owner that is requesting to go through the whole process of obtaining their license. And they've followed all the rules and regulations of the city of Milton code ordinances, and I recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions for Stacy on this? Are there any comments, no public comment or anything?
None, sir.
All right, I'll close the public hearing, and open up for a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion that we accept Agenda Item Number 14-098.
Second.
As read.
We've got a motion from Councilmember Laurel, a second from Councilmember Coontz. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Fire Department City Clerk, please call the third item.
Final item of the evening is consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license for Sequoia Golf Manor LLC, doing business as the Manor Golf and Country Club, located at 15952 Manor Club Drive, Milton, Georgia, 3004. The applicant is Robin Sradlin, for consumption on premises, wine, malt beverages, and distilled spirits, Agenda Item Number 14-099, Ms. Stacy Ingles.
Again, this is a new owner. This is, I believe, this is the tennis courts located behind the clubhouse. One location is for the clubhouse itself, and one, since it's a different address, is for the tennis courts behind the clubhouse. And recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions? Any comments?
None, sir.
Close the hearing. I'll put a backup for either questions or a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 14-099.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Coontz, second, but for approval, we've got a second from Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to, do we have any reports from staff and council? Does council have anything they want to report on? Bill?
Got an article here from the Forsyth County News dated last Friday, concerning the Greenway extensions in Forsyth County. One just started up, it's the next phase, going from Bethelview Road up to Kelly Mill Road. Next one after that, and it's already been funded, is going from Kelly Mill up to Sawnee Mountain. After those are completed, then there's a short section between McFarland Road and McGinnis Ferry Road, which will tie into the Alpharetta Greenway. So, that when Forsyth completes their project, it'll be a little over 16 miles in length. When all of that is finished, the probability is we'll connect to the Silver Comet Trail, which will give us access from Sawnee Mountain all the way over to the Alabama State Line. So, I think it's more important that we continue our pursuit of a connection to the Big Creek Greenway. It's going to be a tremendous benefit for this whole area here, so I'm glad to see that we are moving ahead with a study for our connection to the Greenway.
Okay. Good deal, Bill. Matt?
Three things. One, Earth Day is this Saturday, which I know we have a lot of people that'll be working at that and going to that, so if you get a chance to go, it was a fun event last year, and all kinds of fun stuff, as it was. Also, too, the Friends of the Milton Library is hosting a book sale at the old Blind Dog Pub on the same day, so you can, after you get done going to Earth Day, you can go over and buy some books to read at home, be ready for Easter. And I don't know what happened, a couple of people were pretty active taking down the barns over there at the library side. I don't know who did that, but that was, that's kind of long. So, anyway, that's it.
I would have, I mean, unfortunately, it's sad to see the old houses torn down, but I would have loved to have had that perfect time, and as I drove by there yesterday and saw the little sign that's still up that says, "Please don't disturb the tenant." Would have been interesting to get a picture of that while they're knocking the house down. All right, anybody else? All right, I'll turn it over to staff. I know Jason had a...
Jason's got a published one, I've got a couple.
All right.
And then I'm going to have to head back to work, so I'll have to get back with you later.
If I could get everybody to just flip up their, now I asked you to flip, now, if I could get you to flip up your screen. Appreciate it, I want to show you something. Here in just a second. Before I do that, I'll, and Dave's just getting it loaded for me. I emailed you and let you know that we're doing a, we're doing something Wednesday at about noon. Y'all might want to show. I forgot that we'd do a surprise thing, so if y'all have the ability to show Wednesday, then for a good event here, City Hall come on over, we'd love to have you. I need to update you on something that is not that, that deals with the water tower at the Fremontville Water Tank Site. And as you recall, if you go back to earlier in the year, don't show the other one yet, Dave, just stay with that one that you've got on there for me. The council took an action and approved me issuing a letter to the county manager in support of a radio tower for the 195-foot tower in Milton, on the county's property, so long as they met five criteria, one of which was the tower not be more than 195 feet tall, the other was that it be not lit, and that it be, I forget exactly what all five was. But the fifth, and the most critical one, was to work with the city of Milton in locating the tower in a place that was the least visually offensive to Milton's citizens. This plan that you see in front of you is what was proposed. This is what you saw at the time. This is what you saw at the time that you gave the approval to issue that letter. You can see that the tower compound is completely within the parallel lines that would extend from the water tank to Fremontville Road. It has a second driveway, which was important for the county, because they didn't want to have heavy equipment on top of the driveway leading back to the water tanks. I guess that's understandable, because of the infrastructure that'd be under the ground there. But this was the picture that you saw, that you gave your support to in the form of that letter. If we could go to picture two, this is the plan that the county is proposing at this point. Not that, go down to page two for me, Dave. You can see that's substantially different. Still has a second driveway, but now they've moved that compound all the way over to the property line, indicating that where they initially had put it, the water department has future needs, and that they're no longer able to put it there. I have withdrawn our support of being willing to have those five criteria met in this tower site, and I've withdrawn our support, because that essentially puts the compound for that radio tower site on the property line, against a residential development, and I just can't deal with that, and I don't think it's appropriate. We've seen a plan that works. This plan, to me, does not work. I just wanted to update you on that case, that this is something, obviously, that the radio authority is going to have to work through, something that Fulton County is going to have to work through. It's like asking if you want a red card, as soon as you approve a red card, they sell you a blue one, and say, well, it's close. And that doesn't work for me. So, this plan that is existing today is what is being proposed, is what they want us to support. They believe that we have to permit this tower, and that they're going to come in and apply for a permit for this tower. I've cautioned them that if they do that, I don't see any way that I could approve it, that I would have to apply our code to it as exists today, and at face value, I just don't even see that a fall zone works with a tower at that location. So, I want to be on the record saying those things to you, and I want to be on the record saying those things to you publicly, because I've said them publicly to the radio authority. So, if you start to get any questions as to what's, what position is Milton taking here, unless you want to correct that interpretation that I've made of the authority you gave me in the letter that I issued to Fulton County, I'd be interested in that feedback as well. But if you believe that this new tower location, this new sighting, is not in keeping with that criteria number five, which was to work with the city of Milton to minimize the visual impact of this tower to adjoining neighborhoods, this certainly doesn't do that.
On the scale on this drawing, Chris, I'm trying to, does that mean it moved over about 100 feet or so, 80 feet?
Dave, are you close enough that you can see what the, my eyes weren't that good? Looks like it's 223 feet to the center of the tower from the existing driveway. If you could go to the other one, Dave, from the center of the, or from the driveway to the center of the, so it's 50 and a little bit.
51.
To the edge.
Yeah, 50 to the edge, so then, so you're probably 100, it's probably 133 or so, 130 feet further, rough estimate, further towards the property line.
So, substantial component of the tower height, pretty heavy.
Yeah, I drive by there all the time. Obviously, the first one is pretty wooded right there. I mean, you can understand how you can get away with the first one, but the second one, I could see that being right there by the road, that would just be...
I just want to bring it to your attention, it's going to be a topic of much discussion tomorrow at the radio authority meeting, and I truly believe in our position here, and I know it's probably not popular with the radio authority or with Fulton County, but those are our citizens that are going to live in those houses right there, and, you know, I just, I feel pretty strongly about our position on this, that we should seek to have this first plan built however we can.
Agreed.
Okay, anybody wants to change that direction, I'll take it. That's the position I'll take at this point. Okay, good deal. I'll turn it over to Jason real quick. I know, Councilmember Thurman, you need to get back to work. Tomorrow's your busiest day of the year. But then the day, that next day is also your day of vacation, maybe?
Hopefully.
All right, have a good night. One of the things, when you approved the mid-year budget adjustment that we had in there, which I tried to do a decent job of articulating what we were going to be buying, probably didn't do such a wonderful job, was with the request to add dollars to enhance the city's website and city's web image. You agreed to allow that funding to stay in the budget, and I think what I took away was that so long as I provided Jason an opportunity to describe what he was thinking at some point. So, Jason's going to come tonight and tell you what he's wanting to do, and why he thinks it's important to Milton, in a kind of a staff report on a new and improved web image for Milton. And take it away, Jase.
Okay. So, just wanted to talk about this website project. Go through some of the background stuff, and some of the functionality that we will be purchasing, should you allow me to use that fund. Okay, some of the background. According to Pew Research Center, and Stacy wanted me to clarify this, I don't know if you guys, in journalism, you always go with Pew, they're the gold standard of media research. So, I just wanted to make sure you guys, this isn't just anybody. So, 48% of internet users have looked up information about a public policy or issue online with their government. That's from 2010. 46% have looked up what services a government agent provides. Now, 40%, 48% of adults directly take part in a civic group or activity, and of those, 34% of those people engaged with their elected officials via online methods. So, this is absolutely where we need to be. Our entire focus needs to be online. Our site that we have originally was HTML pages that were updated by the CH, Toome Hill, oh, my webmaster, he was in Colorado, so he had about a three-hour lag to get anything done. When I came on, we purchased the Gov Office Content Management System, or CMS. That launched in September 2010. That was about nine months of content creation. We basically, I met with every department, mapped it all out, wrote everything, got all the photography, did it, and built it myself in four months, using their content management system. In that first month, we got about 12,000 hits. Now, these are raw hits, but February 2014, we have 82,605. That's consistent. It's raised, it's risen every month.
Per month.
Per month. Now, that's not unique IP addresses, that's pure hits. Half that, maybe, for unique IPs, but that means that those people are looking around. That growth is due to social media. So, we use what's called a spoke model, and what I mean by that is, if you look at this diagram here, imagine that all the content starts either on our website or on constant contact. We then push it to Twitter and Facebook, or YouTube, or Flickr, and it all funnels back into the website. So, every time that we send something out, it's always telling people, go back to the website, go back to the website, because that's our forward-facing option. And part of this model is a concept of home base versus outputs. This is becoming much more important as people are kind of getting over the honeymoon with social media. We can't control what happens on Twitter, or Facebook, or YouTube. They give us a free tool, we utilize it. We can control what happens on our website. So, we should put our effort and our money into working on that website. The other content push options are fantastic, but we need to put our eggs in that basket of our own website, because we're the master of that domain, literally. The current issues that we have with our website, the CMS that we have is extremely unreliable system. It eats content. You know, you'll make an update, if you have another window open, it'll suddenly kick you out, the content's gone, it's a real mess. Very slow updates. If you ever see Angela and I pulling our hair out, it's because the website's being very slow. The customer service is pretty terrible. Dave can attest to that, when we try to get in touch with them about changing some of the forms that they had created off... of the forms that they had created off a secure server because it was alerting people that where they were going might not be safe. And so we tried to tell them, "Hey, that doesn't need to happen at all." They had basically no idea what we were talking about. It was unbelievable. We can't take payments online. We have to use third-party systems to take payments online. So our tax system, our court system. And it has no social infrastructure, meaning that there's a lot of, like, online city hall tools that are out there now. This does not have it. And the upgrades to the CMS are slow to nonexistent. There was a reason we had to go with a mobile site provider for 10 months because when I asked them, "When are we going to get a mobile site?", they were just... They didn't really understand what I was talking about. They said, "But the site works on a mobile device." And I said, "But I don't want that. I want a mobile site that takes out all the images and everything and just gives people exactly what they need." So I ran that for a little while, too. Finally, they provided us with a mobile site. So what are our solutions? I've been researching this for the last year, talking with a lot of the people that I meet with at GMA meetings. You know, I'm part of the GMA Public Information Officers Group. We get together quarterly. We'll actually have the meeting here next month. And talking with everybody, getting to know the lay of the land. Gov Office is known as a budget-low-cost-but-low-service provider. You get what you pay for, okay? When we went with this, we had a certain amount of money that we wanted to spend. They came in. It was a tool that could get us there. We weren't getting that many hits. You know, we were doing okay. But now we've moved on. Civic Plus is very popular among the cities around here and counties. It also consistently wins a lot of awards for the design of its site. And there are other companies that offer, you know, municipal sites. I think they're lower quality. You've got Your Vision. You've got, you know, all these different companies, VSP, all these different places that'll do this stuff. And then, of course, you've got boutique companies. But they're not incredibly well-versed in government needs. So I'm sure there's lots of companies in Milton that could provide the city of Milton with a site, and it would be less than what we pay for Civic Plus. But they don't do this every day. So whatever they would be able to build us, I need it to have been tested in other governments, and I need it to work every single time, especially if we're going to be talking about taking payments, permits, all the things that we want to start doing online. So this project, if we go with Civic Plus... They have 40-plus clients in Georgia, 1,600 total. In Georgia alone, they have Charlton County, Heinzville, Augusta, Athens, Savannah, Lowndes. And they specialize in building you custom municipal government sites. They do not work off templates. Got a couple examples here, and Dave's actually going to take you to the first one here. That's Jefferson Town, Kentucky. I just wanted you to kind of get a look at what a good-looking site this is.
Closer.
There it is.
That's beautiful.
Yeah. And you can see, it's a really good-looking site. There's a lot of functionality here on this front page. You know, with service requests and online payments, all these other things you can do. The rotating feature there up at the top. Okay, if you can go back to the presentation, Dave? Let's skip this McKinney, Texas. It's a good-looking one. I think it's... I think ours is going to be somewhat similar to that. But I want you to take a look at Peachtree City. Peachtree City uses Civic Plus. And what I like about Peachtree City that I'm probably going to use for our site is they have multiple updating content areas. So see, they have an "In the Spotlight" area. They have that little "Plan to Stay" area. It's just a good-looking site in general. They've got your widgets down there that you can use, all your little buttons, and your calendar that runs. But I think for us, because we are moving into an era where we are going to be building projects, city hall, and parks and stuff like that, we need multiple content areas. We have a lot of fresh content that goes up. That's why we get a lot of churn at our site. But we also need some different content areas, too, so that you don't just have one option and then the lower option underneath it. Okay. Dave, you can go back. Okay. So this overview. It's a five-month process. Four to five weeks of consulting, three to five weeks of build, testing, training, and launch. They come on-site for the training and launch. Otherwise, they work through me, and I work with all the different departments and do the project management and all that other different stuff, consult with them. But they go through all of our content that we have. They scrub it. They provide us, based on the interviews that I have with them, with how we do business, what our site should look like, what our architecture should look like, the functionality that we want to use to get the most use out of everything that we're buying. Speaking of which, the functionality that we buy with this standard that we do not have right now, first of all, is responsive design. That means that the site, no matter what device you're looking at it from, appears the same, right? So you don't have to have a mobile app. You don't have to have all these different things. It's going to scale based on the device that you look at, and it's always going to be a pretty good-looking representation of the site. Citizen Request Tracker, Community Voice, which is that social media aspect I was talking about, where we can have all sorts of online town hall meetings and post plans and post videos, and people can vote on them. And that can be all internal to our site. People can come and they can upload a photo, and they can have a profile. And it'll basically be like an internal Facebook that we'll use. We can take payments. They have a complete e-payment center module. We can rent all of our facilities and reservations for park stuff. We can do license and permitting. We can do complete online forms, which we kind of have the ability to do now, but since we can't take payments, it's mostly useless. It has a real estate locator, which we had contracted with the company, but that was a big bust because they did not deliver based on any of the things that they had said they were going to. For these new projects, like city hall, like parks, we can have director blogs. We can start to stream video through the site. Right now, we use Granicus, and they actually have what they call a Granicus killer, which is mostly the same functionality, and it just comes standard with the site. If we ever want to move away from Code Red, it does have its own emergency notifications we can do. And for the price, we get a complete redesign at four years because that's their cycle that they do. So the cost. Current site was $10,000 build cost, about $1,800 worth of maintenance. That was for two gigs worth of space. So all the agendas and minutes and everything like that, because of the kind of antiquated requirements of GDOT and stuff like that, some of those packets can be 50 megs... Or 50 gigs. I mean, we'll get these gigantic plans because they need to be full-size plans. So I keep all that stuff on an archive site. So that's always going to stay the same because the next slide, you know, you'll see, we can only buy 10 gigs worth of space. That's for words, pictures, stuff like that. I'll always have the archive site. The new site, $49,000 with an $8,000 maintenance. That's 10 gigs worth of space. However, there are potential cost savings, like with Granicus. If we take a look at this streaming video option that they have, and we like it, and it's... Provides for us the exact same functionality of Granicus that we like, that could be a huge cost saving over Granicus. And then Code Red, if we ever choose to not use Code Red and pay that fee. And, of course, the benefits for that money that we spend. Our brand benefits because really what I am focused on is brand experience, more so than a slogan or logos or different things like that. I'm much more interested in brand experience. Making your experience of working with the city of Milton simple and beautiful and seamless so that you don't have to come to city hall and find the door you're supposed to go to and fill out the form and pay in cash or check or whatever you've got to do, and then come back and get the permit, all online, all on your mobile device, all the time. Our residents, you know, they can get a complete online presence. They can do all those things I just mentioned. They can get an easy, beautiful site. Staff, it can potentially streamline a lot of duties that we're having to deal with right now as far as phone calls and manning windows and everything. We'll still do that, but we can potentially cut down on a lot of that. And then, of course, elected officials. Better site builds more confidence in the community, gives us a better face to those thousands and thousands of people who check us out every day. And, you know, you really have that potential for next-generation connection with residents thanks to that kind of internal Facebook of people being able to not have to come to city hall, which can be a barrier to interaction for a lot of folks. And that's it. And if anybody has any questions about the real down and dirty details about their disaster recovery, stuff like that, I've got all that here as well because that is one of their main selling points, is that since they provide government sites, they are super hardcore about their security of data and security of infrastructure. Yes, sir.
Could you add permit inspection scheduling processes, that one, things you can add to that when you're doing the permits?
The permitting... I have to get in there and really look at all those tools, but I can't imagine that they would give you a permitting module without the ability to fully schedule everything that you're going to do.
That would just... I guess that would be a request instead of having to do it by phone, being able to actually send it online and then see what the status, see when it's scheduled. That would help, I think.
Absolutely.
More business-friendly.
And one of the things that I'm really excited about is one of the projects that our GIS department is working on. It's a map that Nick O'Day had developed that Johns Creek uses, and it has all sorts of interesting data that he put in there. And like, you know, road project data, traffic data, permit data, tax data. And we're working on that, too. And what they can do is they can give that to me in an iframe, which then I just put, like, basically, an iframe is like a hole to another server or whatever. So I just put that on the webpage. So hopefully, we might be able to utilize through another project a GIS tool that kind of does a lot of that stuff that you're talking about so you can check the process as you're moving along because it will pull all that data for you. So there's a couple avenues that we are currently pursuing.
Okay. And then, I'm probably a little ignorant on this. What is Granicus? Is that like the meeting? The meeting video?
Yeah. So right now, we use Granicus to record the meetings.
Stream it so people are watching right now.
Right. Yeah. So it streams, and then it stores to a computer, and then we upload it to their server, and then they give us, you know, a UI to be able to use that stuff. And they offer the exact same thing. Now, the one thing I'm... You know, we really want to look at is, does it offer all the functionality of linking, you know, your agendas and all the things we've grown accustomed to using in Granicus? Because we actually don't use Granicus to its full extent, do they? We use what we use and then, you know, because we're... It's built to maintain all sorts of governments of all different sizes, and, you know, it's a pretty robust program.
Yeah, I know. I've watched a couple of different meetings live, and it's good that you can actually see the agenda. You can see... David, if you're the one who's popping this stuff up, but you're not hearing just the discussion, you can actually see what the different boards are looking at.
Absolutely. Mr. Moore?
Yeah, Jason. First of all, as always, my compliments to you on everything that is communication-related with regards to the city. I think you do a very good job there.
Thank you.
And I just want to make sure I understand. I mean, essentially, what we're asking... You're asking for here is, I mean, you're wanting to upgrade the city's website. You want to move from our current vendor to another vendor.
That is correct.
And you're trying to tell us what the benefits of doing that are.
Absolutely.
I'd ask, the first slide that you showed that talked about the hits and the number of hits that we've received in a certain period of time.
Yes, sir.
Do we have our website hooked up to Google Analytics? I'm supposing that we don't.
We don't. The provider gives us an analytic tool that's built in. And part of that, though, is there's not exactly, at this point, an incentive to more so than to just provide the information there in a place where people can come and find it. Because we don't... We're not, you know, selling things, selling products, all this different stuff. Like, I know the site works, and I know people come to it, and I know our numbers rise, and I know we have good response on social media and everything like that. So we don't get too granular in what we really measure because we can always do better, but we're doing so much better than we've ever done.
Right.
You know, that's where we're at at this point. But I would like all those tools, and they do have much more robust analytics tools that will show me all sorts of different things.
The new vendor?
Yes. Yes, they do.
All right. You had a slide up that showed all these additional benefits that come along with changing vendors.
Yes, sir.
And I would... I mean, there's a lot more to accepting online submissions for permits and stuff like that than just accepting money.
Yes.
I mean, it's got to fit into our backend system, whatever our backend system is. I mean, there's a whole slew of things that have to exist between, you know, a webpage and the system that we're using to manage that kind of stuff.
I agree completely.
So I would be careful in claiming too much in that regard.
I understand.
Until you know for sure that what they're offering also interfaces to whatever system that we're using, or we're going to be upgrading our system in order to work with whatever they offer, kind of a thing.
I have kind of two things with that. One, these guys are probably sick of hearing it, but I agree with you 100%. I... My personal belief is that we should completely decentralize this building, and all of our work processes should output to a database that people can search at all times, no matter what they want, right? Except for employee records, stuff like that. And as part of that, that means getting tools that both take information from users and then push information back out to users. That's where I want to get us, and this is a baby step to get us there. Now, when I look at those tools, and I look at a permitting module, and I look at a payment module, I understand that it might not go into our finance system or our com dev system. But what we're using right now is PDFs that people sign and then hand to someone. So if I can at least get rid of that option so that they can do... So to anyone facing our government, they use the online option, and they just hit "Send," it's still going to end up in the email box of the person who's going to have to insert it into whatever system we have. I'd love to get us to where it just goes seamlessly in there, and then we've just got a database and we check all that stuff. But we're going to get there, and this can... This is an option that could get us there. So I agree with you completely. But if I can at least remove that, fill out most of a PDF, but I have to, you know, print it out and then sign it and then bring it in because I've got to have the form... Now, of course, there's all sorts of state regulations, too, that says you've got to have a real signature on this, you know? So there's all sorts of options that will not be open to us because the law has not been amended to say that, you know, a CAPTCHA or whatever you want to use counts as your signature, you know? But I agree. But I'd like to get us there. And I think this is... I think this is, at least from someone interacting with our government, this could solve a lot of our problems of use.
The only other thing I'd mention is that, you know, in the... My experience in dealing with IT companies, specifically web services IT companies, sometimes the devil that you know is better than the devil that you don't know. I know you were part of the, you know, team that made the decision on our current vendor, current vendor, and I'm sure you learned a whole bunch during that process.
Oh, yes, I did.
I just make sure you apply those lessons to any negotiations going on for, for a new vendor, because, you know, three years from now, you don't want to be standing here saying, now, okay, we didn't get it right the second time either, but this time, we know for sure this is what we're going to do, so.
Yeah. I agree. And, and one of the things that I really, when I was asking around, and, you know, of course, part of the problem is, talking with public information officers and the people that run the website, is there's all sorts of levels of expertise into, you know, I can do a little bit of coding, I can figure it out a lot better than I could sit and write it, but if you give me enough time, I can, I can figure it out, right? To people who could sit and run an entire website on their own, to people who have no idea what's going on, and they really need that Microsoft Word-esque interface to be able to make anything work. And what I was really going for, as I was talking to a lot of different people, is ease of use and what problems have you guys had with these guys? You know, how easy was it to implement? How, what's your relationship like with them? What, what options do they give so that it's more than just me running the website, right? So right now, we've got me, but then Angela can take it over to, I mean, frankly, you guys don't want a tool that only I can use, or that even only I and Angela can use. You just do not want that. Because, I mean, what if, you know, we're in a car and we get in a car accident or something on a, on a way to a PIO meeting, right? But I, I'll, I take that to heart, and I appreciate that. That's a great point, and, and I'm, I'm trying real hard to make sure that I, I go with a vendor that...
I know, sure, I have every faith in you, Jason.
Thanks.
No problem. Okay, Bill?
Councilman Lesb.
On your one slide there, functionality.
Yes, sir.
You had a list of probably 20 different functions. And maybe further to, to Rick's point there about building permits and inspections, probably one of the areas I'm more familiar with than most of the others. Several jurisdictions around here, Forsyth County, for one, has, I think, one of the premier sites as far as building permits go and inspections go. Inspectors in the field, through their own iPads or whatever instrument they're using, instantaneously update the website on any building permit and, so that the user or the contractor or the client can immediately determine if, if he's not on the site, go to the website, find out what the latest inspection is. I guess my point is, must have a detailed description of each one of these different functions and what they actually provide, I guess. Another one, for example, is Secretary of State's website, familiar with that? And you can go in at any time and determine whether or not your license is up to date or when it expires and stuff like that. I'm not, that's about the extent of my...
I understand.
...use of particular functions like this, but they do hit home. And if they're done correctly, they provide, I think, a high level of value for what you're getting here, and they're customer-friendly, user-friendly.
I agree. And now, as far as the Forsyth County, I, from using their website for years as a reporter and all this different stuff, I think that's probably something to do with the, with the in-house software that they have, and it has a web-facing portal. This module that they have allows for, you know, your, all your licenses and permits, you build them in there and then it goes to the person and allows it and stuff. So I, I will absolutely ask about that, about, you know, schedules. How, how deep can we really go with this thing? And, of course, one of the things that they always, that Civic Plus always pushes, is that they work with a lot of cities, so they know the software that's out there. And they can integrate with a lot of different software. So when we sign the contract and we start working on, okay, here's what we want to do, here's what we want to see, here's the software that we have, let's figure out some solutions, you know? Let's cut out, let's cut out paper, let's cut out process. And I will absolutely follow that path.
Just in a different way of hammering the same point, first, second, third. Obviously, a more expensive website, as far as what we're going for, but if we can get that functionality from a process perspective, that just, that just improves our ability to do business in Milton, and improves our reputation as well, increases the tax base, et cetera. It's an investment in the expansion of, of our talent within the community. And, you know, I would, I would just love to think that these are fellowists so efficient that, that people would love to do business in Milton from a permitting perspective and everything. So it's the same point, but we can't justify those costs from a financial perspective as well by people wanting to do that business within Milton, so.
Absolutely. And, I mean, you know, that's, that's part of the, it's part of the interesting conundrum that we're in right now, right? You can throw enough money at a problem these days to where you can custom-build a solution for your entire community, for anything you would ever want to do. I mean, you really can. You can, you can hire software engineers and you can, you know, like, my, my wife is head of sales enablement or something or other at the company that she's at. I have no idea what she really does, right?
You know you're being recorded.
Yeah, yes.
I don't know if I'd admit that.
But one of the things that, so what she does is, she's over developers and they, their salespeople say, okay, wouldn't it be cool if we had this? And like, so one of the tools that they have is, they walk around and on their mobile device, it will show them the infrastructure of every single building around them where they're standing. It'll show them the, the communications infrastructure, everything that they need to know to be able to walk into that building and, and sell them on, oh, well, you've just got this, you need our product, right? So, I mean, you can make this stuff happen. And that's, I've been, I've been kind of obsessed with this idea recently of, somebody who's dropping their kid off at Cambridge High School should be able to look at that piece of property across the street, and they should be able to go, wait a minute, didn't I hear something about that? And they should be able to pull it out on their phone, they should be able to look at it, and it should be able to tell them, this is in the process of going through city council, this is who owns this property, this is the last time that they paid taxes on it, for everything, right? And they should be able to go to our parks, and they should be able to sign up for their kids at the park right there, because the GIS map knows where they are. And so we're working on different stuff like that with GIS. Now, are we going to get to that level of functionality? I don't know. We don't, you know, I mean, we can throw money at this thing until it's, it's incredible. I mean, you can see some of the apps that, that places that have these big name...
Big, whoa.
Yeah. Big-money CIOs. But one of the things that I really like about this is to, truthfully, it, it can give us a little bit of a sheen of getting there, right? It can say, it, so for most people who are going to use this tool, they should be able to just use it, and it's easy, and they go, boy, that was a lot easier than I thought it was going to be, which is basically the mantra of our municipal brand, right? That was a lot, man, that was easy. And we can try and figure out all that other stuff and get better and get better and get better and get better. But this might be able to solve a lot of problems real quick, if, if, if we can execute it correctly and, and launch it right.
No pressure.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what I think I've heard you say is, you're, in going through this build process and working with them, you're going to ensure that, from the ease of use, you're the administrator, you and Angela may be the administrator, but from the ease of use of getting data into that, we're not hamstrung, we're so tied, and we have to, we need them so much in our importing of data or exporting of data to the website.
Well...
Is there a ease of use that you're looking at on your end, as well as the functionality the end user sees?
When we buy the CMS, I think you're asking a couple, when you, a couple of questions. When you buy the CMS, we own all the data. So they own the tool, but we own the data.
Right.
Okay? So at any point, they go under, they do whatever, it's written into the contract, we own every bit of that data, and we always will.
Okay.
So, truthfully, years down the line, you know, we don't absolutely need them. We can move to other tools, and we can change all of our data over, and everything's going to be, be okay. Now, I personally kind of like the idea of only having one or two people that run your website. I like a tool that anybody can use.
Yep.
But the, the issue that you really run into when you go to a city and they, each department head takes care of their own portion of the website, there's no, yeah, it's a mess. It's a complete mess. So you really need somebody who's, who's that guardian at the gate to, to make sure all that stuff works. But it needs to be easy enough to use that, you know, I mean, perfect example here, when I get the flu one day, Christine can go and, you know, upload a bid package for Rick, where right now, it's a little, you know, she has to call me and we have to go through the process and everything. Most of the time Angela takes care of it, but if, for some reason, you know, Angela was out on maternity leave, I think. So, and it's a, one of the cool things I really like about it is, it's easier to use on the backend, meaning it's more intuitive, because the system that we have now is not intuitive at all. It's, it's, you really need to learn it and then figure out how to, you know, work in it. But one of the cool things about this is it actually allows for front-end editing, too. It does front and back-end editing. So usually, you just have to edit the backend, right? With this, you can literally look at the webpage, and if you're an administrator, it'll recognize you. And so for, in, in a, in a storm event, Matt can, can go in, I can set him up on the website, he can pull down stuff off the front page and place something up there that just says, you know, hazmat event, storm event, something like that. So it's, it's, it's a lot easier to use. And it, and a lot of people in this...
Can I break in here in a little bit?
Yes.
I'm starting to see some other side of, you know, people that are all into, computers getting excited and all this, but at, at this point, what are you looking for? We looking for, I mean, it sounds like we've got some support here, but are we looking for this?
The most you object.
A kind of a nod, you know?
Basically, an update for us.
And then, and then the whole procurement and all is...
We'll, we'll handle all that, and it'll come back for you in the normal course. We just wanted to make sure you didn't object to the fact that you allowed for that funding to stay in the budget.
Yeah. So does anybody have any major heartburn with anything? We were excited, too, but...
I understand. Yeah, I don't blame you.
Maybe continue talking about it after the meeting.
Jason, if you find a job, you enjoy your, never work again the rest of your life.
Exactly.
That's it. Thank you very much for your time.
No, we didn't have a lot of time, yet, so...
All right.
I'll move to adjourn the regular meeting.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.